I would like to call and order the December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three regular Board Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District one hundred Board to Order. Roll call.
To Garo.
Here.
Goodbridge.
Here.
Aid.
Here.
Kovak.
Present.
Lewis.
Here.
Brodzinski.
Here.
There you go.
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to lead this Jesus of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, please read our Fenton Mission, beliefs, and Bison Way Statement.
Yes, our mission. Our mission statement, to cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our belief statements, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment, diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community, school and home collaborate as one, we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with the state-of-the-art facilities, we infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture, we prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility, we immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three tax levy. Bruce, will you please present the details?
Sure. The two thousand twenty-three tax levy hearing. Could we go to the next slide if we could? Next, we'll do this at the end, Jim, that part. There we go. So, we presented this, the estimated levy, back at the November Board Meeting. The adoption calendar is listed up there on the Board. We've completed the first two steps. The third step is where we're at this evening, the bolded part, at the December twentieth Board Meeting and Public Hearing, which was necessary due to the levy exceeding five percent. We were recommending adoption of the two thousand twenty-three property tax levy to be filed with the DuPage County Clerk, and we'll ask the Board to act on that later this evening. The twenty-three levy is proposed for the cap funds of thirty million three twenty-one three fifty-six. That represents a seven point seven percent increase, or two million one eighty-four six thirty-one. That does include a buffer for district growth, new property growth, that's the district, so it'll ensure the district captures that new growth. We're assuming thirty-five million dollars in new property, and that's based on information from the Addison Township Assessor. We also have a levy for debt service that's not under the tax cap, that the clerk, the Page County Clerk, automatically extends to meet the payment schedule for each debt issue, and that debt service levy will be seven forty-five, six hundred and fifty dollars. And PTAL, or better known as the Tax Half, the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, that will limit the actual levy extension, and you'll see that in the next slide that depicts that. And then, because we're asking for a greater than five percent, a hearing is required by law. And just to give you kind of a depiction of the CPI history, and that's what our levy is limited to, the ten-year average is two point two eight percent, and that includes the last two years, including twenty-three, of the five percent increases, which has never happened before. Prior to that, just to put that into context, prior to two thousand twenty-two, the average over that period of time is one point six, or was one point six percent. So you can see some of those early years in sixteen, seventeen, are not even at one percent, so that's pretty much a minimal adjustment there moving forward. And as recent as the two thousand twenty-one, it was just one point four percent. So, we're happy that it's higher, it allows the district to capture some more property growth, but we're not sure how long, we expect that to drop for two thousand twenty-four. And going back to the tax cap limitation, the property tax limitation law, this gives you a depiction of how that law actually works. The blue line, this goes from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-two, is what was actually levied, so it was the buffered amounts, so to speak. The orange line is what the actual extension was. So as you can see throughout all those years there, the orange line is below the blue line, so the actual tax levy extension is below what was levied, and that's the tax cap legislation in place doing what it is intended to do.
Right.
This just gives you the actual levy by fund, so the fourth column over the proposed tax levy. So for example, the educational fund is the first one there, the proposed levy of twenty-five million two oh two zero five seven, with a change of about one point eight million dollars, or seven point seven percent, and that is the largest fund of all of the funds that we have of eighty-one percent. And down the line, O and M Transportation, IMR, these are all the cap funds that we levy in. You can see that the transportation has a pretty big jump there. That fund does need to boost up its reserves, so that's why there's a big bump there with transportation, and that's due to really state aid being so less than what it costs to operate the program, so property taxes kind of have to make up the difference. But we're able to do that by reducing the levies in IMR and Social Security, and that fund has adequate reserves, so we're able to reduce the levy there so we can levy more in the transportation fund. So the end result of the two thousand twenty-three proposed levy is that thirty million three twenty-one three fifty-six, fourth column over, Jim, and the increase, the change is two million one eighty-four six thirty-one, or a seven point seven percent increase over the previous year's extension. And then the next slide shows the debt service, which is not under the tax cap, that's approved at the time the debt sale happens. So that is expected to decline based on the payment schedule to seven forty-five six fifty, again, the fourth column over, or a one percent decrease approximately. So when you add up all the funds, including the debt service and the previous page, we're at seven point five percent increase, or thirty-one million sixty-seven thousand and six dollars. And the projected rate over there, second column from the left, is that two point oh one nine four, and that's based on the projected EAV of, I believe it's five or six percent increase in EAV, plus the new property yields, that rate of two point oh one nine four. Again, that's estimated. So that's the levy for two thousand twenty-three. Later on this evening, we'll ask the Board to act on the formal resolutions. Once those are acted upon, those documents will be filed as required with the DuPage County Clerk, and then we'll, the first installment of that would be in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. Any questions on the levy?
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any questions or classifications at this time from our audience and attendance?
We have no audience.
Bruce, just to clarify, do we always ask for a little bit more of the potential
That's correct, yeah. We don't know exactly what that new property is going to be, so we kind of have to do our best estimate based on information that we have at that time.
Sounds good, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
No further questions, we will now close the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three tax levy. Thank you, everyone. We will now return to the regular Board of Education meeting. Karen, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Recognitions? Sam?
Good evening. Tonight, we will kick it off with our very own Lorenzo Rubio, who we're going to recognize. Lorenzo, will you please come forward? Tonight, we're recognizing Lorenzo for his hard work. As you know, he's our Division Leader for Multilingual Programming. This is a picture here at the Thanksgiving, kind of a dramatic picture, I might add, as he surveys the group. But here we have German students that came here, as well as parents, as well as our host parents, so this was sort of the culmination of great things. And ironically, it's been about a year since we first communicated, you remember? Yeah, he does. About this opportunity for German, for a German exchange-type program, so that's the amount of time that he's been putting into this over a year ago. So what do we want to focus on? First off, it's not an easy thing to prepare for students to go abroad. It not only involves just finding the students, you have to communicate with the school in Germany, you have to communicate with government entities, you've got to communicate with parents, so there's a lot that goes into it, and Lorenzo really did an outstanding job all throughout that whole process. Not just our twenty students going to Germany, but then, of course, they sent students here with host families, he coordinated that, and it was a great experience for all involved, and it went very smoothly. And that's key to his preparation and his commitment, and it's kind of above and beyond what a Division Leader would do in his position, but obviously, he took on that charge and did a magnificent job, so how about another round of applause? I also want to highlight that now as a district, what we can say is, we provide tremendous opportunities for our students in so many ways. Now we talk about going abroad as one of the things that we can now do, and who know, you okay, you all right there? All right, yeah, I think he's thinking of, well, we're not exactly sure what the future holds, but with Lorenzo and his leadership, we know that he will be a part of those experiences. So Lorenzo, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I think it was, it was a lot of work, but I think it was all worth it for those that were there that last day. Don, you were there. The goodbye where we tried for like fifteen minutes to get the kids on the bus to leave, they were hugging, did not want to stop hugging, and a lot of crying, and then it's like, I think at that point, we realized like, wow, this was really something for these kids, like they really, really got something out of it, and so I'm always going to remember that. So thank you for putting me in the spot to do it, for letting me just plan and work and pulling it off. It takes a lot of support from the Board and the Administration, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to take a picture, or?
Yes.
Yes, we do want to take a picture.
Pictures?
No.
My picture in the background.
Picture of you in the background, and a picture of you.
Oh, that's good.
First one.
First one.
And everybody's step forward.
She said step forward. Is that good?
That is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Lorenzo, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next recognition, no more crying, don't cry in this one, this is a happy one. Our next recognition is to the youngest Bison ever. Congratulations, Ken and Janay, for baby Isadora Kovak. So. We had a bet going earlier, right, didn't we, Sam? He was saying, he's going to look so tired when he comes in here, and I'm like, no, he's not, he's energized, and I think I won that bet.
I don't know, we'll have to.
We got to see.
Well, we'll have to see, it's still early in the evening.
Ten o'clock. We got to wait until, how you hold up until ten o'clock, so.
I've been doing the late-night feeding, so I promise you, I am wide awake. But I credit myself on being, you know, kind of a board member without a child, so and now that is not the case, but I still endeavor to, you know, keep that in mind, but it's been a lot of fun, I appreciate the support from all you guys, so really good to know. She is adorable, yes.
Thanks, Ken.
Next item is informational items, James?
Sure, fantastic. First item is the building recommendation, the administration recommendation for a building referendum. Board, our first topic is the building referendum. The administration recommends that the Board place a building referendum question on the ballot on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This presentation, this presentation will cover the scope of the referendum, the financial impact, and the ballot resolution. Next slide, please. Why are we recommending a building referendum, and why sixty-five million dollars? There are three main reasons why we need a building referendum. Number one, we have a nineteen-fifties building, and the facilities are rundown and need renovation, specifically the CTE, which stands for Career Technical Education, FCS, Family Consumer Science, Social Studies Wing, English Wing, World Language, and E L classrooms. Number two, outside the classrooms, the infrastructure, light piping, sprinkle system, and mechanical system need to be replaced and modernized. And number three, we need modern classrooms, modern restrooms. Why are we recommending sixty-five million dollars? We had two referendums in the past that were unsuccessful, one at a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, and the last one at ninety-nine million dollars. We need to demonstrate to our taxpayers that we heard them, thus we lowered the amount which will renovate a modest number, not all, of the classroom and restrooms, and modernize our infrastructure. We have our architect here, Alan, to review the scope of the proposed building referendum project. Alan?
Good evening. Let's take a look at what we have planned here. So at the heart, this project is really an infrastructure project, and if we look at this quick image, you know, all your utilities for your building really run down your corridors, air, water, electricity, fire sprinklers, data, it really kind of is the system that keeps all the other spaces going. So to kind of address that really does help every space within the building, it'll improve the indoor air quality of every space. We think that's valuable to touch every student. Kind of a big-picture wise on this plan, and we'll break it down into categories on the next slide a little bit, and the STEM project is to the left side, classroom improvements in the orange, at the far right, magenta, is food service culinary improvements, locker improvements, and the CTE, which James mentioned. So if we break that down a little bit, kind of working from the bottom up, there's really four big categories. Infrastructure, again, what you'd expect, all the kind of behind-the-scenes sort of things, replacing mechanical units, piping, that sort of thing. Next category up, student health and wellness, this really addresses issues like bathrooms, you kind of have a chronic district-wide bathroom problem in terms of location and in quantity, we can definitely improve that. Locker rooms, kind of a surface improvement to the locker rooms, again focusing more on the bathroom facilities, but improving lighting and indoor air quality. Next category up, student safety and security, again, fire sprinkling the whole building, again kind of enhancing that safety, alarms, things like that. Woven into that is the life safety, and life safety is a program that the State of Illinois uses to make sure your buildings are up to code in terms of the dead minimum requirement for safety. So those improvements, every school district has a list that they generate every ten years for that, ten-year life safety plan. So we want to take advantage of construction on-site to maximize the value of doing that work in conjunction with the infrastructure work, it'll make it much more efficient. And then the top category, enhancing the learning environment, really kind of touches on improving those classrooms that are dated, really bringing them to more better educational, current educational practices. CTE, again, probably the area we've seen the most development in the last few years, and your facilities are dated, and recognizing they have to move with the programs. Auto shop may be an easy example, or as used to be, you know, hot-rodding the old cars, and really now has drifted into maintenance for hybrids and moving towards electrical vehicles. And there's a significant equipment component to that sort of thing, but also there's a safety component, not just managing fumes in terms of welding and auto shop, but clearances between equipment for safety and more effective learning environment. So in a snapshot, that's the big picture, we think all these are important, and it doesn't touch every part of the building, but it does touch every educational space to some degree, but really gives some real improvement to the campus as a whole, improves energy efficiency, and definitely will help with your maintenance and ongoing costs.
Could you just?
By addressing kind of our infrastructure and really putting a focus on this, this means that in the future, if we wanted to kind of feed some additional improvements that enables that to occur, much more so than any other way.
Interesting point, it does set you up for further improvements, you know, your infrastructure, everything that feeds all those individual spaces, if you want to convert some classrooms in a different sort of space, your utilities would all be up to capacity, so you could do that more simply and easier. You can combine that work just to the space, relying on being able to connect to the rest of the building, and certainly we get in the bigger spaces, it's even more effective. It'll really help quite a bit, it really is kind of a way to future-proof your school a little bit by taking, in some cases, nineteen-fifties screw-in fuses and making them modular circuit breakers that again can be much easier modified and much easier maintained.
Could you discuss more about how this infrastructure improvement would save us monthly costs far as power and maintenance and?
Yeah, and I'm going, it's interesting to see, particularly, water's maybe the most obvious, where bathrooms now really use like twenty percent of the water that the bathrooms designed in the nineteen-fifties did, but probably the most cost-effective solution is, every mechanical unit we replace now, as a rule of thumb, is thirty-five to forty percent more efficient today than it was even ten years ago. So if I'm comparing those units to units that were in the fifties, you know, it's literally almost a fifty percent improvement, which is pretty amazing when you think about it, delivering superior airflow, superior outside air, but really using significantly less energy. So all that, all that money you spend on utilities, and I think the logical assumption is that your utility costs aren't going to go down, so you might as well take matters in your own hand and try to use as little as possible, so it will help, and certainly maintenance as well.
Thank you.
During the pandemic, we received air turbine systems, would that still be able to work, or would that be replaced, or is it?
Excellent point, yeah, so it is part of the, you might remember the program ESER, which is really the federal program that really improved air quality, so you did some spot improvements for that, which is really the goal of that, but it's interesting to see how much impact that has had on our business in terms of the sensitivity, indoor air quality is much, much higher. And so I think that's probably one of my most rewarding pieces about this, it will improve indoor air quality virtually throughout the entire building. There was actually a study done the other, I saw the other day, where they identified in a school, improving indoor air quality had as large an effect as reducing the student-to-teacher ratio, it was that impactful, and something we all kind of knew intuitively, but it was interesting to see empirical. So very exciting opportunity, and we look forward to seeing what the, how the community thinks about it as well.
Alan, could you just quickly go over the slides so our audience on the other side of the screen?
Yes, let's merge through this a little bit, thank you very much. So again, as I mentioned, the corridors are really the lifeblood, so on the left-hand side is your existing corridors, the right-hand side is an example of a recent project we did, where again, better insulation, more efficient units.
Jim, next slide, please, if we can piece with Alan, please.
There we go. Mentioned the electrical, again, you do have some original nineteen-fifties electrical panels still, certainly have some newer ones, but I think there's real opportunity for improvement there, and it'll be no surprise to anyone that in classrooms done in the fifties, it was not unusual to have one or two outlets, and that is probably the single most request we get from teachers, is we need more outlets, so we can obviously include that once we can improve the capacity. Water service, again, we talked about sprinkling the building, so I have to improve the water coming into that, the, you have some galvanized piping, and most houses around this area will recognize that galvanized piping has a finite life to it, you are definitely near the end of that finite life, because virtually every district around you has replaced their galvanized piping. And I think that with the classroom improvements, I think in really working on that infrastructure in the hallways, it does give us the opportunity to open up the hallways a little bit, really get some collaborative spaces within that, some shared spaces, some breakout spaces while we're doing that work, that's the time to do it, because we're already in there, we're already changing those spaces. Classrooms, again, driving to more of a furniture-based model, it creates it very flexible, so you can do small group studies, traditional lecture, break it down in a lot of different ways, we recognize different students learn differently, so giving the teachers and the students the power to change those rooms easily by making the rooms simpler, improving airflow, as I mentioned, lighting, utility support of power, but really going to form a furniture-based instead of built-in spaces. Some other examples. Food service, there's very few programs that we don't get requests to modify food service, this is one of the most popular programs in schools, it's often very tied to the personality of the instructor, but driving away from on the left-hand side the residential model, but really going more towards the hospitality-based model, this is a real example of, you know, education-to-work environment, these can be very successful. CTE, again, the amazing thing about the CTE programs, they can really touch everything, we talked about automotive, which we'll see in a second, robotics, medical, there's one of your spaces on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, these can be really exciting, and really to make that transparent, so people can really see the programs that are going in there, they're very kind of kinetic, they're very exciting, and again, these appeal to a wider range of students, some people are very adept at this sort of program, and perhaps less so at the others. Auto shop, again, good lighting. Auto shop, again, good lighting, good airflow, the equipment to really make use of, to really maximize the opportunity. Even wood shop, again, clearances between equipment is very important in terms of safety, but there's all kinds of rules about airflow and kind of scrubbing out the, in the auto shop, the exhaust. In wood shop, it's really more the coatings and varnishes and things like that, and there's very strict requirements for that. Again, robotics, machines, CNC machines, very popular programs. And again, a lot of interest on the industrial community on these sorts of programs. These can incorporate almost anything. A lot of people are doing medical-based programs, communication-based. And they'll have to see the green screen for broadcasting, and so it really can run the gamut. Bathrooms, your bathrooms are not the best I've seen. I think this will be a huge improvement. This is probably the singular most request we had gotten from your faculty and staff during our interviews. And once I had to recognize how far I had to go to the washroom, I made the point really come home.
Yes.
Seeing the updates in culinary, especially the CTE areas, do you think we'll be able to offer a higher level of quality of programs in this area to perhaps reduce our reliance on sending our students outside of the building for some of these things?
Absolutely, especially with the equipment that's necessary for culinary or family consumer science. With that sort of equipment and modernized facility, what they have done in TCD, all right, we could copy here at Fenton High School. Same thing with automotive. I think for our students to go out of campus takes a lot from the students, that high school experience. It's not always a win for all of our students. So if we could duplicate what's happening there at TCD over here, that's a huge benefit. And lastly, we could open it up to the community. A modern culinary facility, we could open that up to the Park District. We could open that up to our parents. We could have our own programs here for free. And that's what we're hoping to do, same thing with automotive to utilize that space.
We could potentially see some recapture of those tuitions that we're paying to that external body.
Absolutely.
Back in here for some, I mean, I know it's not going to be $65 million of recaptures, but that is a good spot we could see some luxury reductions.
Exactly, exactly. Kate, any insight on that for TCD equipment and facilities? Anything you want to add in duplication or same? No?
I think you raise a really good point because it'll encourage students who, you certainly have your hardcore, really dedicated, you know, gearheads, for example. But when it's on campus, you'll get people who will be much more inclined to try it, which I think can really, it can surprise people. They'll find things that they really like and really love, so I think you get a broader distribution that way.
I would just say in general, the culinary industry, you know, is pretty thriving and there's a lot of interest. It's hard to make that connection with our current facilities and...
Correct.
But just certainly by the types of upgrades we're talking about, it would open doors into that industry because we don't want to do food for fun. You know, we want to be able to do something with it. And right now, we can, but this would just provide a better pathway for us into culinary. Yeah, well, I mean, it could open up some avenues as far as, you know, once we, if we have the right type of equipment, more of a catering-type service. Not that we're going to cater all over the community, but we could cater our own events potentially and that type of thing, so it could be a real asset for us.
Any other questions for Alan before we turn to Bruce in regards to financial impact? Thank you, Alan. Great job again.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Sure, this slide just shows the estimated impact of the various bond scenarios. So the estimated annual increase in debt service for the various amounts there of 45 million, 55, 65, or 75 million. What we proposed is the $65 million amount. Annual debt service increase would be $4,588,438, and the impact to a homeowner would be $222. And that's based on a $229,000 home valued in this, average value in this area. Those rates are based on November 8th. They've since gone down somewhat, which is the good direction. We'd like to see it go, but it is a 20, reflects a 25-year payback schedule. But that's kind of what that would look like, an estimated amount per month for, or per year, I should say, for owner. And then on our web, the next slide, it's just to kind of give the familiarity, I think the board's all aware of this, this was available on our website, the tax estimator, where you would plug in on the left side there, you enter your fair cash value of your home at the bottom of the screen there in the orange bar. And that's the amount on the top of that tax bill. The fair cash value is what would be entered in. And then the various exemptions, if any of those apply. Most of the folks are eligible for a homestead exemption at a minimum. And perhaps some of those other things, we've checked no for this example. But again, once you plug that fair cash value home in, it arrives at that $222 annual impact or a monthly impact of $18.52.
That's good to show just the monthly impact.
So if the cost of going to the downloads were, you know, once a month, it gives us a valuable lot of revenue.
That's a good way to compare it to. Later on this evening, if the board is so inclined, we will have a resolution, do have a resolution included in your board packet. You've seen this before, prior attempts at this. The general election would be held on the 19th day of March 2024. And the following proposition, which indicate, show it as listed here. I won't read that whole thing, but shall the Board of Education of Fenton High School improve the site and renovate, alter, repair and equip the Fenton High School building? And it goes on to the specific items. This is the first page of that resolution, but just to give you kind of a snapshot of what that looks like. And then the polls, of course, are listed there and the times that they're open and closing from the DuPage County Clerk. So that's what that would look like, and that's, as I said, later on in the board packet for the board to consider. And then the actual ballot itself, here's what it would look like. The questions there, shall the Board of Education of Fenton, DuPage High School, DuPage County, Illinois, improve the site and renovate, alter, repair, and so on? All those items that we talked about earlier are listed here to capture those things to look at improving in the building. You're voting yes or no? And that's what you would see in the voting booth when you go to the polls.
Bruce? This is awesome. Question. Can we also have this in Spanish?
It is by law, listed, translated into Spanish as well, so we, yeah, it will be available in Spanish, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, just was curious on that, so.
Yes, good question, though.
Thank you.
Will we be hiring an outside company like we do at Fenton High School?
That's a really good question. I would recommend to the board that we don't, but we could have that discussion. I think we know the landscape both at Bensonville and Wooddale. I believe that we have the data we need in regards to addresses, who are the young folks that have kids in our district are hard-to-reach individuals, both at Bensonville and Wooddale. We have that information. We know the political connections, whether the Republican or Democrat or Independent. We have all of that information from our previous try at the referendum. Any questions for Bruce in regards to finance? Like what he said, we're going to ask the board to, we'll recommend to the board that they approve this resolution at the discussion action item. Moving right along. Up next is our diversity and equity update. If we could have Mr. Lorenzo Rubio here again, who was recognized earlier at this meeting to provide that update. Lorenzo?
Hi, everyone. So really excited to bring some diversity and equity updates to the board. I know it's been a while since we had some updates, so we'll get right into it. Oh, I do it. My bad, I thought it was going to be done for me. All right, so we'll start with some cool cultural celebrations and highlights across the building from the first semester. This is a picture from the Guatemalan Independence Day Parade, which happened in early September on a Saturday. Our kids signed up, they gave up time on a Saturday to go and participate. They marched in it. That Scooby Doo is a Fenton student in there. He got recruited last minute to be Scooby Doo, so it was a lot of fun. And it was good to see the kids, you know, represent where they were from. That was just the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month, which was a huge success. Obviously a big month for us, given our student population, but we had the field trip. We had a Day of the Dead altar that the kids designed and put up in the Commons. And then a big hit always is some, the lunch activities where we gave free conchas, which is like Mexican sweetbread, hot chocolate, aguas frescas. The lines were really, really long and the kids were really enjoying that throughout. So there's just some pictures of them enjoying that. And then as we moved on through the semester, November and December, you could still see some of the trees in the Commons area. I hope you got to check them out, but each club was able to design their own tree and decorate it. And in December, thanks to Julia and the rest of the team, there was hot chocolate every Friday in December. That was also a big hit with the jazz, the jazz band playing as well. And then even in November, we had some Native American heritage activities, some land acknowledgement and daily announcements leading up to Thanksgiving, some storytelling in the ark, and some more voluntary field trips right on the weekend. Field trip to trees from around the world at the Museum of Science and Industry, which that picture right there is from. So all of, behind all of these cultural and diverse activities, there is a push. It's been a priority, it's going to continue to be a priority for us. The DELT team continues to work. DELT, for those that need a reminder, District Equity Leadership Team. It's made up of five focus strands, which I'll show on the next slide. Each strand is made up of a mix of administrators, teachers, and staff. And we have about three meetings per semester. So we just wrapped up our December meetings here just to show that the work is ongoing always in diversity and equity. These are our five strands, just as a reminder. So teachers and staff and administrators were able to volunteer for the strand that they felt most compelled to join. But we have systems which works on building equitable policies, processes, and procedures. Teaching and learning about equity-driven pedagogy in the classroom, student voice, making sure that our students have feedback in every decision we make, professional development, and family and community as agents. So just a few highlights from those strands. Our student voice committee is very strong this year. We had really immense, like, interest in joining. We had the largest group, I think, in a while as part of the student voice. We've added also a Spanish student voice committee this year to ensure that our students who maybe are not English language proficient yet still have a voice as well. And so those meetings are held on the same day, but in Spanish as well. And I'd like to point out, we're also ahead of the curve in this as well. CPS and a lot of other districts are beginning just now to start up student voice committees of their own. We've been doing it for years and it's been very, very successful. A lot of our decisions that have come out that we make as a building have student voice, student, you know, prints on them as well. In terms of our equity-based professional development, I'm very proud and excited that we've made EL, English learners education for all, the building focus this year. So when we get back on January 8th, that will be again driven home as one of the big focuses. It's built in throughout the year. Our mandatory diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all new staff continues. So I've been working with the new staff members in the building. We've had two sessions and two more scheduled for the spring to wrap that up, but that's been obligatory attendance and it's been really good. And we continue to push, given our percentage and our demographics, we continue to push our staff to earn an English learner's endorsement as well. That would be very helpful for us as a building. And lastly, our family and community as agent strand is hard as work as well. Padres Unidos and the Polish Parents Group continue to meet regularly. They just had their last meetings for the semester last week, both groups, very well attended. And on the horizon, second semester, we hope to put together some partnerships with the Blackhawk and Wooddale, the feeder school districts, parent groups as well, in particular, the bilingual advisory councils at those schools. So that was it in terms of a quick equity update for the semester. Thank you.
Great job, Zoe. Thank you so much. As you guys know, just wanted to highlight again, the DELT DEI equity is part of our strategic plan 2.0 as it was on strategic plan 1.0. Glad that it's moving, moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Zoe. Next up, which is also part of our strategic plan, is the PACE framework. Kate's going to talk about that a little bit. Kate?
Yeah, just a quick update. Last month, Michelle Papa-Nicolaou gave a great update on career pathways. And the PACE framework really is part and parcel of that. So just as a reminder, and I printed out a bigger copy for you. Illinois, each school in Illinois has to adopt the PACE framework by next year. What a lot of schools are doing is they're just adopting this generic one, which is nice. But Michelle is doing a great job of really pushing us to personalize it, to make sure that it is molded for Fenton. The other thing that you're going to see here is that it starts in ninth grade and it ends in college. So what we've started to do is this month, we met with our feeder schools. So we had district representatives from District Two and District Seven, and we also had representatives from College of DuPage. So we have teachers, administrators from our building and those buildings all coming together to really make sure that we're not missing anything, that this is a realistic plan, and it's going to help our students to explore career, college. Hopefully, from the time that the P20 stands for P preschool, 20 is like grade 20, right, throughout college, but that our kids are really going to be able to build year after year after year on making sure that they're exploring career in college. So we're really doing this with fidelity, not just what the state is saying is the bare minimum. We're going above and beyond to make sure that it suits our students. And our goal, we have two more meetings scheduled with District Two, Seven, and COD, and then the goal is to finalize this in April, and then we'll have it on the website. And it won't just be on the website, it'll be our actual plan that will live and breathe.
Board, we'd like to keep you updated on that. We know that's a state mandate, but it's also part of our strategic plan. The goal is, or mantra is, every graduate will have a career plan. Okay. Next up, what we like to do at the end of the semester is just go over the student demographics. Next slide, please. It shows here we have 1,431 students attending. Two of them are in eighth grade from Wooddale, taking accelerated geometry. So 1,431, as you could see, ninth grade is a big class, about 400. Everyone else, 10th and 11th and 12th grade are approximately 315. Next slide, please.
Those two eighth graders are actually Blackhawk.
At Blackhawk, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So a total without our eighth graders, 1,429. Students with disability at about 15%. 504, which is basically accommodations both medically or physically, is at about 5%. EL students at around 27, that has grown tremendously in the last five years. And our low income is approximately 63%. Yes, sir? Sure, I can go with it. IEP stands for Individual Educational Plan, that are students with disability, our special ed students. That's what it stands for? Okay. Next one is 504, that's federal 504, Act of 504, which are students who are not in a special ed program but needs accommodation, whether it's medical or physical. Okay. LEP stands for, we don't like to say this, which is limited English proficient. That's what the new terminology is, English learners. And our low income is low income, students of poverty. Next slide, please. This is race and ethnicity. Approximately our Latino students that make up approximately 70% of our student population. Our Caucasian students at 25, two or more races at 3%, Asian at 2%, African-American at approximately 3%, and so forth. Next slide. Next slide. Like reported earlier, the finance facility, TLC continues to grow. We have 17 students moving to 27 next year. Any questions in regards to student demographics? Thank you. We'll do that again.
What's our average, you know, kind of age, I guess, or, you know, where are we at, like, on average, in our journeys with the 17 students we have now? Are we trending first half of the time with them, second half of the time with them? Just out of curiosity.
Well, they go until their 22nd, well, they actually go past their 22nd birthday.
Right.
So it would actually continue, if they turn 22 in February, or better, like October, they continue and finish their career there.
Right. I just didn't know with the 17 that we have, are we trending?
We're trending up because, we will trend up because right now, in the NetSec program we have here, we've added students. Those are typically students that would continue through transition, assuming they want to continue with our services, which a pretty high percentage of the students with those types of disabilities would continue as long as possible for the most part. So the trend would be for it to continue up. I don't have a breakdown of each age, but the projections are more students will be attending TLC.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, I just didn't know if these 17 were getting close to rolling off, meaning getting that upper age bound, or if they're more, these are, you know, these came in the last two years, and we still have, you know, that six years with them or not.
Sure, I've seen that data. Again, we'll probably be remaining at the average of 27 for the next four years.
Great. Thank you.
Moving right along, another part of our strategic plan, a thread of our, theme of our strategic plan is student life. We have our Assistant Principal Julia Brady to talk about that.
Well, thanks for having me tonight. I'm really excited to talk about student life with you all tonight. I'm here with Pedro Rodriguez. He is our athletic director. I'm gonna start off by talking about clubs and activities, give you kind of a view of what we've hit this semester, what we've been doing. So we are gonna see a video first. So that video just shows you how much fun we've had this semester, right? We know that we've had some challenges with our building, and our kids have really pushed forward, right? We have done everything to make it as normal as possible for them, and they have just kind of gone with it and enjoyed themselves all semester. So a recap of what we have here this year. We have 47 clubs and activities here on campus. Last year, we were about 35, 36, right? So we've grown. We have competitive groups. So those are groups that are gonna compete with other schools in our conference. We have course-related groups that are going to be focused on courses. They tie into things like our future healthcare professionals, our computer science and engineering. Those are our course-related. We have honorary groups, so our TRIAM, which is our music honor society, our national honor society. Hobbies and interests, we have a lot of those groups. Those are ones that our students just enjoy dropping into. Our Dungeons and Dragons group, we have a kaleidoscope group that works on creative writing. We also have music-related groups, our jazz band, our swing choir, and also our bison banda. We've got six new clubs this year. They are fully funded. A couple of these moved over from our Frida Kahlo groups. Frida Kahlo, we were fortunate enough to have a grant for about five years. That grant has ended, but we did see a lot of growth within these groups while they were Frida Kahlo groups. So we decided that we should continue them here at Fenton. This year, we had the girls' flag football. They had a really strong season. IHSA has actually picked that up as a full sport, so that will be moving over into Pedro's athletic realm. But we were really excited to have them this year. They did really well. Future healthcare professionals, that's a new group, doing really great. Computer science and engineering, that's our bike club. International Club, that was a Frida Kahlo club that, they did some really nice work, working with different cultures. They did a lot of different field trips, that visited areas of Chicago. We've renamed that to be International Club. Mariachi Club, bison banda, they just performed at our winter concert. And then our Just Dance group is students who just like to dance, but maybe not competitively. So our comparison numbers, last year in 2022, 23, those were our numbers at the end of the year. And our numbers at 23, 24, that's what we're looking at right now. So those numbers were pulled just a couple of days ago. Our total student enrollment, like we said earlier, is 1,429. We currently have 459 students participating in clubs and activities. That is single-count students. 286 are females, 173 are males. And then you see the breakdown between each class. So we have 81 freshmen who are in at least one club or activity, 117 sophomores, 129 juniors, and 132 seniors. 291 of those students are in more than one club or activity. One of the numbers that I would like to focus on this next semester is the freshman number, right? We want that number to grow. We know that our students, the more they're involved, the more successful they're going to be. So I wanna see that number grow. I want to see these numbers overall grow, and I know they will. So I put an important note on the bottom there, that not all of our clubs have reported their rosters. It's a fairly new process for our clubs and activities to report that out. So it's just kind of working with them and encouraging them to report their rosters. And then also, we have a lot of clubs that haven't started yet. So our Spring Musical, our Group and Terp, our Contest Drama, those haven't even started yet. So I know those numbers will go up, and I'm really excited to kind of see where we end at the end of the year.
Like, I'm sorry.
Yep.
What do you think, fine and male participation took place? Do you like that?
Yeah, you know, it's hard to tell. We did see a lot of students move into athletics, right? So our numbers in the past years, our football team kind of had low numbers, but this year we had a really big increase in our football numbers. So I'm hoping that's kind of where we see some of our males maybe moving to, right? They moved away from clubs and activities, but they moved into athletics. Any way we can get them involved is what we want.
Do you have the numbers to show clubs plus athletics last year, and then clubs plus athletics this year, to see, are we trending up or trending down?
I don't, but that is something that we can definitely look at for next semester, at the end of the semester, and kind of compare those numbers.
Right. We have historic data from past years where 22, 23 increased over the course of the year. So the right comms, obviously, it's a snapshot right now, so we're kind of projecting. But I think that's a great idea, like she said, combine them together, see what we are collecting.
Yeah, I mean, just to see total engagement, right? You know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So recap of what we've done with clubs and activities and just student life in general. In August, we welcomed the class of 2027, 396 of them. We have about 75 or 80 amazing Link Crew leaders, and they welcomed that really large class in August. It seems really far away, but our Link Crew leaders have done an awesome job all semester, making sure that our freshmen feel welcome, getting them used to high school and what it just means to be a bison. We had a lot of Welcome Week activities. We started off the year, of course, with a Spirit Week. You always gotta get involved that way. So we had a Welcome Week, lots of activities, started out with a Clubs and Activities Fair as well, to get our kids going right away. September, we had a really early homecoming, but it was great. Tropical paradise weather was perfect. The rain held out for all of Homecoming Week, and we had a really great time. Even with the stadium construction, we were still able to have our Homecoming bonfire. We had it out in front, smaller fire, but we still had all of the fun, all of the games, the DJ, the food, all of that. We hosted a Homecoming movie night in the Field House, big screen. Lots of kids came to that. And then, of course, our football games. We had our girls' flag football, we had our boys', we had our pep assembly, all of our traditional homecoming events. Maybe they were different days, it was a little non-traditional, but we kept it really, really fun for our kids. One of our newer events hosted by Link Crew and Interact was our Day of Service, a really great opportunity for our students to get into the community and to give back. So we had opportunities here onsite on campus. We also had some opportunities at the Bensonville Library, and then other various spots around the community. We're hoping to host another Day of Service in the spring as well. Our theater department was pretty busy in October. They had a really great performance of Leaving Iowa. So a Thursday, Friday, and a double Saturday show. Leaving Iowa was a really fun show for our kids. We actually have the audience onstage as well, so our team did a really nice job with that. Then our theater group jumped into an open house to kind of let our other students know in the building, what are other opportunities within our theater department? So they hosted an open house. Later in October, our garden club and our film club, they hosted a pumpkin carving party right around Halloween. So we had students carving pumpkins, they were watching movies, they had all the Halloween snacks that they really, really wanted. And then our student council in November hosted their annual fall blood drive. Their goal was 46 units, and they met their goal of 46 units, so they did a really great job. What I really love about the blood drive is that this brings out students who are first-time donors. And a lot of these first-time donors then come back, and they keep coming back, and they become lifelong donators of blood. And so our students are learning very early what it means to save lives and to give back to the community. So really excited and love the blood drive. We host three of those a year. Our next one will be, I think, in March. And then in December, like Lorenzo said, we had a lot going on. We hosted a holiday tree decorating event. We invited our clubs and activities to decorate a tree. We kind of had a holiday party to just celebrate and to build a lot of community together. We also sponsored free hot chocolate on Fridays, and we had our jazz band, our swing choir, and our guitar ensemble play some music in the cafeteria in the mornings for us, just to get us into the holiday spirit. Couple of those Fridays, it was about 50 degrees outside, but we were still serving hot chocolate and lots of whipped cream. We hosted another movie night. We showed Home Alone just a couple of weeks ago. Pretty good attendance there. Again, that was sponsored by our Link Crew and our film club. And then you wouldn't be complete without another Spirit Week at the end of the semester. We also had an appearance by Santa Claus, passing out some candy canes.
I don't think we have any footage of that.
We, no. We don't. Second semester events. We are really excited to be able to provide our students with tutoring. Last year, we were able to fund that through Frida Kahlo, and we decided we've still gotta continue this on. It's a huge support for our students. So in November, we started that back up, and we're really excited to have a great team of teachers working in our tutoring room after school. In January, we'll welcome the class of 2028 to campus with their families for their Welcome Nights. And a new partnership with COD to help us with some SAT prep. COD will be bringing some of their professors onto the Fenton campus. They will be taking some of our students through a three-night course of test prep. We've got auditions for the Spring Musical, we've got Pack the Place, and then we also are hoping to continue our Young Women's Leadership Summit for International Women's Day. And if that wasn't enough, we still have some goals that we wanna hit. Our Upstate Eight Conference, we have some conference meets, and we have leadership conferences that our student council students will be attending. We're expanding our conference, so we're hoping for smooth transitions with four new schools. We are looking for leadership opportunities and activities conferences for our students. We are hosting a leadership recognition breakfast and awards, because those students do so much for us, and they don't often get recognized for the work that they do for us here at Fenton and for the community. So we wanna take an opportunity to recognize them. And then also continuing our work, looking at our clubs and our activities, creating a Clubs, Activities, and Athletics Council, and really listening to our students and bringing their voice into the work that we do. Any questions for me before I hand it over to Pedro?
What is SpongeBob musical?
SpongeBob musical? You know, I don't know too much about it, but it's, it does have some catchy music. We are, we're actually really excited about this show because the theater department is reaching out to our feeder schools, Blackhawk and Wooddale, and they are trying to get some of their sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to participate into those larger chorus numbers, so it can become more of like a community theater program, almost.
Do you have a lot of parent participation with the theater program?
Um, you know, sometimes, it depends on the kid, right? Some parents are able to give us a little bit more time, and some are just there to see the show and support their kids in that way, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Great job, Julia. Up next, other arm of student life is athletics. We have Pedro Rodriguez. Pedro?
Thank you. Before I begin, I just wanna say, what a great job Julia has done, although this is my, this is my first year, obviously. I've been here roughly six months, but in my third school, I haven't seen as many students involved in our student activities. So Julia's done a really tremendous job. Thank you, Julia, for all the work that you do. Yeah, so I'm really excited, again. My name is Pedro Rodriguez, and excited to be in front of you today, just celebrating and recapping our athletic programs during this first semester. So as we've mentioned previously, we have a total student enrollment of 1,429 students. In the fall, we had 326 students participate across eight competitive sports, and two were sidelined, so dance, force, and cheer. Some of the highlights this... Some of the highlights this fall season, Girls Tennis had their best-ever finish in the Upstate Eight Conference, finishing fifth. This is the best finish in conference since joining in 2018. It's a really tough conference, and our girls' coach did a really nice job of getting and recruiting some girls to get out there and have some fun. Boys Golf had over 30 students try out, and there were no cuts for Boys Golf, which is great, to be able to give them and provide them that opportunity. This is the most ever students that have tried out here at Fenton for Boys Golf, and we're hoping to continue that trend, given the resources that we have so close by with White Pines. They do a great job of supporting us as well. Boys Cross Country, I know we've had great history with our cross-country teams here, specifically our Boys Cross Country team, they qualified, again, as a team for sectionals this year. We have a really tough sectional. Obviously, we're one of the smallest schools in 2A with our total enrollment, and our coaches do a lot, and they do a really nice job of preparing all of our students, especially in cross-country. And obviously, she's been recognized before, but not enough can be said about sophomore Jocelyn Way becoming the fastest three-mile female runner in school history, placing 16th in state, which is a tremendous accomplishment as a sophomore, and I look forward to continue to see her competing downstate for the next two years. She's done a tremendous job of preparing herself, and the coaching staff and her team have done a great job of motivating her as well. So we just have a, just an extra recognition for Jocelyn here and her coaches that you're So this fall, we did, although we were offsite for most of our outdoor events, we did celebrate some great events, such as Senior Night, Homecoming, and we also had some special achievements. Obviously, we have all-conference earners in their respective sports. Nate Stewart was an all-conference selection in football. Peter Anagnos is a sophomore, he was an all-conference placer in Boys Golf as a sophomore. That's, that's great for our future in Boys Golf here at Fenton. Lily Do is a senior this year in Girls Volleyball, who earned her 500th dig, which is a major accomplishment, and we celebrated her in the top right. Our Boys Soccer Team and the rest of our fall sports did a tremendous job of being committed to their long seasons, and they worked really hard, given some of, obviously, being offsite. They did a really nice job, and the coaches did as well, of preparing themselves for the state series. Again, some more work that Julia's done, many thanks to her in spearheading this event, but we do have some really exciting facilities projects that we were able to accomplish. So in October, we did, we were able to wrap the external doors of the Fitness Center, Gym 3, and the Field House. These are actual pictures of what they look like now. I hope you've had an opportunity to walk the building and see these doors. They look fantastic. Some of the feedback from our staff and students have been nothing but positive, and I think that it, it shows and it elevates our commitment to our athletic facilities here, and I think that the kids take a lot of pride in that. So thank you all for being able to make that happen. And obviously, looking ahead, we have some exciting new projects on the horizon as well. This is a photo about, this is last week, on the right of our new floor and design in the front gym. Again, I think it gives us, it really elevates what we're trying to do here at Fenton in improving our facilities, and it gives us a mean look, which I really like. I think we did a really nice job of coming together as a team to really decide on the design here, given the, obviously, the space and all of the sports that we fit in there. All of the lines that you see there matter, which is why they're there. We have eight badminton courts, seven that we use for competition, and one that we use as a scorer's table in the spring, so those are the ones in gray. In orange, you see the volleyball courts, that are three of them side by side, and then obviously the main basketball court that you see in the thicker blue lines on the baseline, and obviously the blue Bison head in the logo in the middle there. We were able to add some nice touches within the three-point line, as you can see that the, inside of the three-point line is a different shade, and then obviously, we were able to write "Fenton" on the free throw line. I think this is turning out really great, and I'm really excited for our students to be welcomed back second semester during the new gym. Everyone's been really excited about this design as well. We also are upgrading our indoor baseball and softball hitting nets and our infield mounds and playing surfaces for softball and baseball. Again, right, thank you to you for your commitment in improving our facilities here at Fenton, and I think that the kids really appreciate that. One of the, one of the great things that we were able to do this fall was provide all of our fall athletes with exit interviews and give them the opportunity to respond according to anonymously, so they can, they can share their thoughts on everything. How did their seasons go? How did they feel about the coaching? How did they feel about how well they were prepared? All things about their seasons, and a lot of the students really responded that they look forward to being back on campus for a lot of their events, and they're excited about some of the improvements that we've been doing. So I'm really looking forward to, to a great second semester. And then just to look ahead, obviously, as some of our winter sports have started up here in late November, excuse me, Boys and Girls Golf are, I'm sorry, Boys and Girls Basketball are off to another great start. Our Boys team is currently 11-1, they're 6-0 in conference. This is, to my understanding, one of the best starts in school history. I know that last year, we had a really great team as well. This year, we look really strong as well. It's important to note that last night, we beat South Elgin to, as a battle of undefeated teams within the conference here at home, which was a really big game. So we have a really special team, and Coach Taft and his staff have done a really fantastic job of preparing our students to be successful. We are hosting, Fenton is hosting Boys Regionals the week of February 17th. I hope all of you can make it and support, support our teams. We're looking forward to a special run in the postseason. Girls and Boys Wrestling, participation numbers are up from last year. There's a lot of potential in both of these programs. Girls teams play, the girls' teams have had fantastic success, I believe, since we've started here. They placed third out of 21 teams and four individual champions in Jeffersonville, Indiana Invitational. This was last weekend, and as a team, the girls also won the Niles West Tournament. So there's a lot of, a lot of success there, and we look forward to having a few state qualifiers in March for Girls Wrestling and hopefully for Boys Wrestling as well. I think that's it. Any questions?
Any comments for Pedro? Fantastic job, both Julia and Pedro for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is board members' accomplishments for this semester. You guys are fantastic. I hope you know that. Pedro has hit it a couple of times here. Thank you for supporting our students. I mean, it all goes back to the students, and with that presentation, you have your fingers all over that, whether you know it or not. But here are more things that I'd like to give you a shout out. Number one, you rolled out the Strategic Plan 2.0. It's key. It's our North Star, it's our pathway, it's our journey where we want to move the district. Thank you for doing that. Also, a huge thank you for the water mitigation project, which also opened up a new stadium for us, okay? And most importantly, resolved our water issues coming from 80th Rain Grove Street. As well as the Stemwind Project, which will affect many generations of Bisons moving forward with a new Stemwind, new classroom, a state-of-the-art, modern facilities for Fenton, which is outstanding for Bensonville and Wooddale communities. Next slide, please. Board member best practice, balanced budget for the last eight years, and you guys continue to do that. Board policies, we're up to date with the press policies. You're committed to that. You're also committed to the DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. And lastly, we have a five-year contract with our teachers' union, which is very fair. Thank you for that. Leadership, you've shown leadership in the Kerma S, our Latino Outreach, Fenton Foundation. Currently, Leo is our president there, as well as Mary Timmons is our vice president, obviously, and Bruce will continue to be the secretary. But next, that board, NetSec Board Member again, Mr. Figueroa, thank you for leading that charge and our Bensonville Foundation Board, which was initially initiated by Sylvia and Julia. Thank you for doing that, and now is taken over by Kent and John Rzinski. Thank you for that as well. Our board member is committed for continuous learning at the local, state, and national conferences. We've attended all of, all of the conferences, including the conference in Dallas this February. Best practices and expectation, we do a self-evaluation where we do a retreat, we close the doors and talk about the board members and how to gel. How can we be more efficient? How should we communicate with the superintendent? How should we communicate with each other? And lastly, Leo again was recognized as established board member leadership recognition, so we're very proud of that. But deeply, you guys don't hear it enough from the administration and staff and students, thank you for all the things that you do for Fenton. Next up is press policy. Talk about policies and staying up to date. You had Jose here.
Yeah, so just an update, I mean, this is going to be for next month. We're going to need to discuss quite a few updates that were given to us from IASB. So Illinois Association of School Boards and Press, which stands for Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, work together to provide all these updates for us as a district, right, all the districts throughout the state. So I anticipate a full meeting next month at 6 o'clock, so I'm sorry, John. But I just want you to, you know, be aware of what you're getting into. There's a lot to talk about, and I want to make sure that we do it justice, and, you know, we work through everything, including the policy that was asked for by the board that is also going to be on the docket as well for next month.
Fantastic. As being on that subcommittee, I am deeply, deeply excited.
I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are.
When do you think we'd be able to get a, kind of a preview of all of this?
I'll work with James on that.
Correct. It will be after the board meeting, so we just wanted to give you a heads up, probably by Friday.
Fantastic. I'm just looking forward to it. Seriously. I love this stuff.
You can wait after that.
Sam, I want that, that, he is, he is pumped.
It's great to see. I'm impressed.
What do you think I'm going to be doing while I'm waiting for my, you know, while he's just getting fed, you know?
That's right.
I need something to read, and this looks like a very good time, so.
Thank you, Jose.
Yep.
I think this is the last update here. Real quick, we're working on the 24, 25 school calendar. Real quick, here's the timeline. We will present a draft presentation in January, and the vote will vote on the proposed calendar in February. So approximation, we're thinking of a start of August 14th. That's once again a draft. Winter break is from December 23rd to January 3rd. Sprint break is always done last week of March, and the last day of school, approximately May 30th. So more to come. Just giving you a heads up, we're working on it, and we're getting feedback from our unions as well as our administrators. No, it wasn't the last one. And lastly, we had four FOIA's, all of them resolved. One was from Data Bid, requested for bid opening tabulation or apparent lower bidder for water mitigation. Next one was Bo Kim, requested water mitigation bid release for DuPage County only. That has been resolved. And the Illinois, Indiana, and Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting requested copies of bid tabulation. That has been resolved. And Mr. Rob Benson requested an audited financial statements for the last five years. That was sent at approximately 3:00 PM this afternoon. Mr. President, that's the informational item.
Thank you. Consider agenda. Next item, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roque?
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego? Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstate.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item is discussion action items. Acceptance of the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at the general primary election to be held on March 19, 2024. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing school building bonds to the voters of the district at the general primary election to be held on March 19, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roque?
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the following 2023 tax levy resolutions and certificate as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Did you read the whole thing?
Okay. A, resolution authorizing final aggregate tax levy for the year 2023. B, resolution authorizing and directing certain special purpose tax levies for the year 2023. C, certificate of compliance with truth in taxation law.
So moved.
Second.
Any dis, any discussion? Roque?
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Committee reports, Bensonville Community Foundation.
So unfortunately, John and I weren't able to make the last meeting, but I did follow-up afterward. We are working on a balanced budget, going through the audit process at the end of the year. There was still some monies that were available, but overall, we benefited heavily from them this year, and looking forward to giving them a proper thank you for the monies that were given for our term exchange program. So I'm hoping that we have something to present for them in our January meeting.
A thank you or a note?
A note, appreciation, any sort of video. They really, really engage and like what we did the first time, when we gave them money for when we went over to Germany. So it would be really, in my purview, it would be a good idea to have that same level of enthusiasm and participation when we say thank you again for the monies that were given for when this student's getting here.
You bet.
If there's anything you can do to help assist in that process, please let me know.
Board DEI Committee?
Yes, we have.
We have.
Mr. Goodrich?
Myself.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Kent, definitely, yes.
Board Finance Facilities Committee?
I think we've really beat this up and off in the last couple of meetings. I don't think we need to recap. Things are moving along, things are in the future. Let's see what happens in a couple of months.
Board Policy Committee?
No update as of now, but next, next meeting, we are going to have a very exciting and integrating meeting, so I hope you all come with a whetted appetite for policy.
IASB delegate, myself, it was last month, yeah. Triple I, great, great time. It's also, we first time to partake in it. It's also your first time to partake in the Triple I.
The Triple I Conference.
Triple I Conference.
Oh, downtown?
Downtown, yes.
Oh, yes, that was the first time.
Yes.
Interesting experience.
Lynn?
There was no meeting scheduled for this month.
NetSec?
We had a special meeting back in December 12th, and the occasion was just to approve some of the increase of the salaries of the, paralegal it was?
Paraproses?
Paraproses, yes. And definitely, the wages were so low. And I believe we did a good job, thanks to James and the other people who are in the committees. And also, we were talking about the lease or the changing the DLC to the Bridgeview. I believe we're going to have another special meeting this coming month. It's going to be January 20. That's all that I have to report.
Next board meeting, Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM with a tentative policy committee meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion? May I have a motion and a second to go in to close session for the following? A. Five Illinois CS 122 slash 2C1. The appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District 100. B. Five Illinois CS 120 slash 2C2. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. C. Five Illinois CS 120 slash 2C8. Security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual a threatened or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property. Ro call?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, motion.
I will second the motion.
Now, Ro call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego? Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
I recommend we keep going or does someone, people wanted to take a break?
I need, I need.
You need to, okay.
I need to walk to the facilities.
Okay.
Teggen.
Row call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. We're back in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor?
I motion to adjourn.
Yes, second.
Motion passed.
Aye, aye, aye.
Row.
The only Lieutenant of all attention.
Row call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Folks, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Good morning.